I know, I know.
Is this correct? Is that correct?
I don't think so, church, but nameless.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is now five o'clock. Thank you for coming to today's city commission meeting. We are certainly glad that you all are here and we will now call this meeting to order. We will begin with roll call on District One.
Deandre Knoxen, District One.
Felix Herrera, District Two.
Elma Bowie, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dorothea Jones Pointer, District Three.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
Right, let the record reflect that we do have a quorum has been established with a full commission here. We will now have the invocation we are happy to have with us today, Pastor Stephanie Hughes. And we are grateful that she is here. And following that, we will have Commissioner Clark lead us in the pledges. After the pledges, Pastor Hughes, if you'd like to give us some information about anything you have going on after the pledges, you can stay at the podium and do so.
Yes, sir, thank you so much, and it's a pleasure to be here. Let us pray. Mighty God, we thank you for your presence here in our midst. We come with so much to be grateful for, but also with possibly heavy shoulders. We thank you for all those that lead and serve this city that are present here, but also those that may be on our streets that are serving right now or waiting in anticipation to serve. And Lord, we also come maybe as citizens with worries. Lord God, may all be heard that need to be heard today. We ask this in all of God's people's stead, amen.
Please join me in the pledge, our nation's flag. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag? I honor the Texas flag. Our pledge is allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark, leading us in the pledge. Pastor Hughes?
Just two things. One, May fourth is Servolution. This is when many churches in our community get together to serve. Please, if you are a part of a congregation or even if not, but talk to your pastor about getting your church involved. It's just a great time to come and serve in community as one body. And even if you're not involved in the church, sign up anyway if you have a heart to serve. The other one is, I don't know if you are, know or not, but we have pastors on patrol in our schools. And I just wanted to talk to your clergy about that as well. We volunteer at Blocker, at the high school, in the high school in LaMarque and both in Texas City, but we need more volunteers, whether they're clergy or whether they're chaplains. And we just kind of walk around and get to know the kids and just be an extra support for the teachers. And it's just a great thing, and that's it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thanks for having me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing up the POPS program, the Pastors on Patrol. That is a good program and very much needed in our schools. We are now up to proclamations and presentations. And I do have a couple of proclamations to give before I move on to our service awards. But this month is National Crime Victims Week. And if I could have the representative who is here from National Crime Victims Weeks, you can come and stand at the podium. And we will read this proclamation. Whereas National Crime Victims Week is observed annually in April to honor victims of crime and to recognize the resilience of survivors and their families. Whereas the Resources and Crisis Center of Galveston County provides comprehensive support, advocacy, and resources to victims of crime, including survivors of sexual assault, domestic violence, child abuse, and other traumas. And whereas victims of crime often face physical, emotional, and financial challenges as they navigate the criminal justice system and rebuild their lives in the aftermath of trauma. And whereas by working collaboratively with law enforcement, criminal justice agencies, victim service providers, and community organizations, we can strengthen our response to crime, enhance victim services, and promote justice, healing, and hope for all individuals impacted by crime. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City and on behalf of this commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty first through twenty seventh as National Crime Victims Week. And I urge all members of our community to join me in honoring the victims of crime, supporting survivors, and reaffirming our commitment to justice, healing, and resilience for all. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on this day of April, this seventeenth day of April, two thousand twenty-four. This is signed by myself, Dedrick Johnson, and attested by our City Secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. Come on up here. Thank you very much. Let's give it up one more time for the Crisis Resource Center. We certainly appreciate them for all they do for victims of crime and want to thank them for being here.
Thank you, I'm Christina Ortiz Bergwall, and I am the Community Representative for the candlelight vigil that's taking place on Sunday, the twenty first, at the Nestler Center. So I so appreciate our CC and our other community organizations who are helping to support this event. And hopefully you can help spread that awareness or share the flyer if you see it on the City of Texas City website. Thank you.
What time, Sunday?
It's at six o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to it being National Crime Victims Month, uh, Week, I'm sorry, it's also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And so we want to present this proclamation as well. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is recognized annually in April to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities on how to prevent it. And whereas sexual assault is a pervasive and serious public health issue that affects individuals of all ages, all genders, sexual orientations, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And whereas the Resources and Crisis Center of Galveston County tirelessly serves our community by providing vital support, promoting prevention effort, advocacy, and resources to survivors of sexual assault and their loved ones. And whereas the impact of sexual assault extends far beyond the immediate physical and emotional harm experienced by survivors, often causing long-term trauma and affecting their mental health, relationships, and overall well-being. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim this month, April, two thousand twenty-four, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I urge all members of our community to join us in supporting survivors, promoting prevention efforts, and working towards a safer and more equitable society for all. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on the seventeenth day of April, two thousand twenty-four, signed by myself and the City Secretary. We want to present this to you.
As a resident of Texas City myself, I would really like to extend my appreciation for the council as well as for Mayor Johnson and the City of Texas City. Every sixty-eight seconds in the United States, another individual is sexually assaulted. So we really appreciate the city's support and our mission to end domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and human trafficking. Thank you, guys.
At this time, we have a couple of service awards to present to some longstanding employees who have been with us for a while, and we are certainly appreciative. Let's have Engineer John Tudor, if he's here. We want to thank him for ten years of service with our Texas City Fire Department. Unable to be here, but we certainly thank him for his service. I never understood how they can drive those big old trucks, but we're thankful for that. And then we have Ms. Jennifer Price, our Director of Human Resources, who has been here for ten years. And her beautiful baby daughter.
I was gonna say thank you for the last ten years and had two babies while I've worked here and excited for ten more.
All right. I'm excited to hear that ten more part. We're thankful to all of our... At this time, we're up to reports. Every city commission meeting, we try to have some reports from different departments in our city. And we're thankful for that opportunity so that the citizens can be better informed as to what goes on and how your tax dollars are being spent. Today, we will hear from a report from the Neighborhood Improvement Services, Chief David Zachal of our Fire Department.
Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So we're gonna travel back in time to two thousand twenty-three, even though it's April. That's where we started. So in two thousand twenty-three, we received five hundred and fifty complaints. And we completed fifty-one percent of them. Some were declined, and if we decline them, it's because we didn't see a violation. If they were canceled, it was because we already had the violation. So if you look at the difference between twenty-two and twenty-three, the number of complaints received dropped about eleven percent, which is good. And I didn't do that, there she did. Did I?
You did.
So holdover complaints from twenty-three that we brought into this year. In twenty-two, we had six hundred and three complaints carried forward from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. From twenty-two to twenty-three, we carried forward sixty-three complaints. And from twenty-three to twenty-four, we only carried forward twenty-one complaints. So we completed ninety-six percent of the complaints we received last year. So complaints are different than projects. Complaints are what we receive from the community various ways, email, phone calls, logging into the city's website and entering a complaint. And those, if they are valid complaints, they turn into a project. So we have complaints on one side, we have projects on the other, new projects, other processes that the NIS officials go through to resolve that complaint. So a project can be initiated one of two ways. It's from a complaint received by the community or a self-initiated complaint by the officer being out there traveling around looking, sees a complaint. So this year, in two thousand twenty-three, we had one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three complaints that we worked, or projects that were worked, compared to sixteen hundred and sixty-six in two thousand twenty-two. And these include both complaints we receive or self-initiated projects. So in two thousand twenty-three, the self-initiated projects accounted for seventy percent of the complaints we resolved. Whereas in two thousand twenty-two, we only had forty, four hundred and forty-eight self-initiated. But in twenty-two, we were concentrating on resolving complaints from twenty-one and twenty-two. But we spent a lot of time handling the complaints that we already had that hadn't been acted upon yet. So of the one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three complaints or projects we had in twenty-three, they can be resolved in one of two ways, voluntary compliance or forced compliance. A voluntary compliance is always the goal. When we first started back in twenty-one, we had about ten percent voluntary compliance on high grass complaints. And now we're up to forty-one percent. So it's getting better all the time. This year, the junk and debris complaints or projects that we're working, we're getting about seventy-seven percent compliant. So things are getting better. And paying on the invoices that we send out is improving. So with two hundred and forty-nine working days last year, we completed an average of seven projects a day. We still had a hundred and twenty projects that were still in progress at the end of twenty-three, but those are primarily substandard structures that take forever in a day. You'll see the different categories. The big one this year was the high grass, seven hundred and eighty-eight, four hundred and ninety-three out of the sanitation. Those are stuff that's left on the side of the road to pick up. And their numbers seem to be staying steady over the years as far as sanitation, but they do a good job every year. So this year, we completed seven hundred and eighty-eight high grass complaints. So about forty-five percent of those were voluntary. And the other fifty-five percent, we went with our contractor and abated the property. Substandard structures were down this year. At twenty, in twenty twenty-two, we had a hundred and eleven this year. We had seventy, and of those seventy, fourteen were remodels. So their count is... Junk and abandoned vehicles are, were down from four hundred and forty-one down to two hundred and twenty. But we had one junk and debris project last year that lasted seven weeks. So we got one officer, he's at one location for seven weeks, harms your other numbers. Junk debris and illegal dumping. If you remember, last year, we brought onboard a contractor to help us out with those, and that made a significant improvement. So we went from forty in two thousand twenty-two to a hundred and twenty in two thousand twenty-three. Miscellaneous complaints are typically put in, they're miscategorized, not entered correctly. So when we see them, we go through and we change it. It's either junk vehicle or junk and debris or high grass or something like that. So once they're re-categorized, we go out and work them. And these are numbers over the last four years that show from when we started in twenty-one to reorganize the process to where we are at now. We are currently identifying categorizing all city properties. We have vacant property that's owned by the city. We have vacant property that's owned by the Properties and Trust, which is all the taxing entities. And then we have EDC property. So we've already done the PIT Properties or Property and Trust, and we're now categorizing the city's undeveloped property to determine if we can sell it for residential purposes or keep it because we need it for right-of-ways or things of that nature. And these are some of our success stories with the houses being remodeled. So we would ask people when they want to remodel a house that's been identified, we give them a forbearance agreement that lasts for ninety days. As long as we're seeing progress, we can extend that ninety days. But they have ninety days to remodel and get it back to where it's usable. This was a junk and debris that we started working last fall. It was actually a zoning violation, but you can see a lot of junk too. And at the end of the year, all that was left was this trailer you see on the right corner, and it's now been moved, so that's a completed project. Occasionally, annexation, zoning, grandfather retirement converge. We had a, we had annexing property up along thirty-four, thirty-six, and there was a mobile home park in there. And the owners decided they wanted to retire. It couldn't be rezoned, so we worked with the United Way and every, all the other agencies that assist with the United Way, found them places to go. And ended up with a piece of property that's cleaned up and ready for sale. Twenty twenty-four, at a glance, we're about twenty-seven percent ahead of work last year at this time. So they continue to work hard. It's a, it's a good group, everybody's involved in it. If you see on here, they've had some form or fashion been involved in the neighborhood improvement. Questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Chief Zachal, NIS program?
Great job.
Doing a great job, things are looking good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are up to the public comments. Each meeting, we give an opportunity for the public to address the commission, provided that they fill out a request to address the commission form before the beginning of the meeting. Today, we have quite a few people who have requested to address the commission. Ms. Clara Holcomb and Mr. Richard Holcomb and Ms. Emily Vasquez have all requested to address the commission, but Ms. Clara Holcomb is gonna be the spokesperson for that group. We'll allow Ms. Holcomb to come forward and state your concerns. Let me remind everyone that you have up to three minutes for your comments, after which the commission will not be able to take any action on that. State your name, your resident, and you may begin.
My name is Clara Holcomb. I do live in LaMarque at twenty-seven oh eight Magnolia Drive, but I pay taxes on six to seven properties here in Texas City. I do want to talk to you all about number ten, thirty-third Street South here in Texas City. I know that this is on the commission's radar, and we hope that we can get something done about this home. The man listed on TAD's report as the owner passed away in two thousand twenty-one. So we're not totally sure who lives there other than his wife and assorted other people. In the last three years, we have watched the condition of this home deteriorate. We have worries. Some of the neighbors that live in that neighborhood or here in the audience today would have spoke, but only one of us can, so they have children. They are concerned about the activities that go on. I have three rent houses in this area that are within a hundred and fifty foot of number ten, thirty-third Street South. Recently, one of our houses vacated because they had children, and he did not feel that it was safe for his kids to play outside in the neighborhood with all the activity. Another renter is asking for her deposit back, who just moved in three months ago as she watches a man publicly urinate in the backyard every day at number ten, thirty-third Street South. The other third house, her mother comes and stays when she's working out of town because she's afraid of her house being broken to because of all the activity and traffic. We watch drug activity. I see activity now that is indicative of prostitution. The lady that lives there, the wife of the deceased owner, scraps every day to make a living. They have people that have lived in tents on the property. In December, two thousand twenty-three, we, our rental vacated, and the very first night that the house was empty, our window AC and heat unit was taken from the home. We called the police to file a report. I was able to provide all the information, the serial number, make and model of a window unit that we were never able to have recovered. The neighbor at ten, thirty-third Street South had fresh scratches on his stomach area, his arms, and we were told by the officer that came out that those scratches, I'm sorry.
Can you please take your paper off of the screen?
I am so sorry.
Thank you.
I did not notice it was moving. But they told us that the scratches had nothing to do with the item being stolen. We also had a couple other things, a metal shelving that was sold that was seen at ten, thirty-third Street South. And we were never, we never got it back as it made it to the scrapyard before we could take our property back. We are just concerned, there's been sixty-one police calls since January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, after the owner passed away. There were thirty-four police calls to that address just in two thousand twenty-three. They now do not have their aggressive dogs. One of my renters had to call the animal control and the police because she tried to walk to the little store two blocks away and had to carry her broom to avoid being bitten by the dogs. They were removed, but now the owner has been able to go back and take back an aggressive dog that today is at large.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate all of your comments.
I thank you for your time.
As stated, we are aware of the property and it's in the process of being mitigated. Next to address the commission, we have Lane Harden. Did I say that right, Mr. Lane Harden? You can make your way up to the podium. If you don't mind, Mr. Harden, state your name, your residence, and then your issue of concern.
My name is Lane Harden. I live at thirty-three, thirty-seven Texas Avenue. And what I want to complain about is the cars between thirty-fourth Street and one forty-six on Texas Avenue, they're parked on both sides of the road. And when you go up through there, if there's another car coming to meet you, you can't get by them. You have to pull over to the sides to try to get by them. And them cars have been parked in a ditch for years and never run. So I don't know why they don't tow them, because they're on city property. So why don't they tow them away, you know?
Can you state that, that location one more time, please?
It's between thirty-fourth Street and one forty-six on Texas Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but you know, I live right there, and every time I go up through there, and that's, it's a junkyard there that picks me up, scrapyard. And they pull their trailer out in the road half the time. They got loading it with trash, I mean with scrap iron. And then you have to wait to get around it, if there's another car coming. And it's, it's just a hazard, you know, to get up through there. And two, like I said, two cars can't go at the same time, most of the time. So if the car is parked there, it's parked right on the edge of the road or someone up on the road. So that's all I want to say.
Yes, sir, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll definitely take a look at it. Thank you very much. All right, this time, we have no other requests to address the commission. Our agenda calls for us to move on to our consent agenda. Commissioners, you have before you the consent agenda items seven A and seven B. If you would like any of them pulled for further discussion, you may do so at this time.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve the consent agenda items A and B, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Down to our regular items, eight A. We will consider and take action on an ordinance, number two zero two four dash thirteen, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment to appropriate funds from the sewer line improvements account, three hundred thousand dollars, and from the water tank improvement account of thirty thousand to the sewer line rehab account, three hundred thirty thousand. We'll hear from Mr. Miller, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eight A is a proposed budget amendment to complement the sewer line water rehab phase twenty-three account. The adopted budget provided for funding of one point two million. Engineering and advertising have already obligated two hundred and thirty-three thousand of that. And the construction bid came in at one million two hundred and eighty-five thousand, leaving a funding shortfall of three hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Therefore, we recommend a budget transfer from the line, sewer line improvement account for three hundred thousand and water tank improvement account for thirty thousand. The total recommended transfer is for three hundred and thirty thousand and will provide residual funds of about eleven thousand when the dust settles. And staff recommends you approve the transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Commissioners, do you have any questions about this agenda item?
No, sir. I'm move for approval.
A second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Pointer, to approve and seconded by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. At this point, we have not yet really broken the record, but that was a pretty quick meeting. Pretty short meeting, but we're thankful for those of you who came out to participate in this portion of your local government. We will now begin with the commissioners, see if we have any closing comments. Commissioner District One?
Just wanted to say, Chief Zach, great job, and everyone else who had a part to play in our neighborhood improvement services. You know, it's great to see the progress on paper, but it's also great to see the progress in, you know, in action, you know, as I run through District One and as I meet with some certain constituencies. It just looks good over there. So just thank you and everyone else who had a part to play in it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herrera?
No comment today.
All right. Commissioner Bowie?
This weekend was a busy, busy weekend for the city of Texas City. And I'll let my counterpart tell her section, I won't steal her thunder. But region two S dash four of the Lions Club, there's about ten of us in local clubs. Santa Fe, the two clubs in Texas City, Texas City, Mainland, and Texas City, Lamar, Santa Fe. At any rate, we hosted a district convention. We had two hundred people in attendance over two days. Many people just came for the vote on Saturday and left, and I thought, wow. But the feedback that we received from everyone was our facilities. The Nestler Center was complimented over and over again. They have never experienced the luxury of having swag bags in, at the registration table. And people were fighting over certain items that we were short on. But the calendars with the artwork of our students was, was a big hit. And the lip gloss was a big hit. The woozies were a big hit. It was great that we were different. And at first, I said, we don't need that, we don't need no bags, we don't. But people were clamoring, and we didn't have enough for everyone. So basically, we gave them out to people who register early and who paid. So people who came and paid on the spot didn't get one. And that was incentive for them the next time to perhaps do it a little bit early and pay for, for your registration. But thanks to the city of Texas City for the swag bags, Mr. Harris to Korea, and thank you, Mayor Johnson, for coming to speak because they kept you there an hour longer. They told me to have the mayor there at eight o'clock. He didn't speak until nine thirty-ish. Thank you for your patience.
That's all right.
That's all.
That's okay. I enjoyed it, and thank you for the invitation. The Lions Club, like several other organizations in our community, they do a lot as it relates to humanitarian efforts. And, you know, not only in Texas City, but just across the nation. So thank you again, and to the rest of the Lions, we're happy to have them here. Commissioner Garza?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. The city of Texas City staff does a really good job. Not only do they do good work for the city, but they do good work when it's outside of their realm of their, the scope of their job. Recently, when the high wind hit Texas City a week ago or so, a tree fell on a woman's house, elderly woman. And Mr. Fuller took complete control of the situation, and he had some help, and he resolved that matter. And I thought that was very noble. That was a good job, George, in coordinating that effort. And then there's a big tournament coming up for the Rotary Club. And Mr. Tumbleton has kind of helped working heading that up for the Rotary Club, United Way. So thank you for doing that, all outside of the scope of their jobs.
Good. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Mr. Fuller's doing what Mr. Fuller does all the time. We appreciate him.
I will. I will.
Commissioner Pointer?
No comment.
Commissioner Clark?
Well, just because she looked at me like that. I want to give her an introduction to, she has a lot of things that she needs to say. So thank all of you for what you do, and I would like to present to some and introduce to others. Commissioner Jamie Clark, District Four, City of Texas City. Let's give her a hand.
Thank you, ma'am.
Never a domino.
Sorry, I don't know what to say, sorry, Mayor, but her introduction's a lot better than yours. Now, just a couple of things. Chief, y'all doing amazing job, so keep it up. Everything's looking really, really good around town, so we appreciate everything you're doing. What Commissioner Bowie was talking about was, I think, the duck derby we had on Saturday. So I'll switch hats with my involvement with the TCIST Foundation for the Future. We had our duck derby Saturday, very successful. It was a new venue, because we did it at Carlos Garza Park. Is instead of floating our ducks down Sting Creek like we have in the past, we did it out there. And it really worked well. But thank you, Dennis. The park looked amazing. I heard a lot of great things about it. The pavilion was, it just all worked, it worked really well. Everything was right there close. We had a big kickball tournament at the fields, and the fields looked amazing. So thank you for all your work. They, they were there to help us from start to finish, so we appreciate that. I think we raised a lot of money for our foundation, so it was very successful. We'll probably do it there again next year, so we appreciate it. And also had the honor of speaking at a dedication of a new home for Habitat for Humanity yesterday. And it was, it was so neat to see the, the young lady that, and her two daughters that were coming into this home and, and all the partnership between the, the school and the chamber and the city. And, and they were so grateful for our partnership and being here in our city. So I just want to, want to pass that on. They were very, very happy to be here, but everyone just gave really kudos to the city. And Christian was out there and stuff, so it was, it was, it was a great day. It was a great day to see that, so. A marathon, yes, marathon, Dave was there, and, and several representatives from Marathon were there as well. Yeah, so it was, it was a, that's a, it was a fun day to see that. It was a happy lady.
Thank you for being there on behalf of the city. We do have a good working relationship with Bay Area Habitat for Humanity, and we'll continue that relationship. It's al- always great when you can give someone keys to their first home or their new home. And, and just, just thank you for being there, Jamie, and to our corporate sponsors who helped make that happen. I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the annual memorial service for the nineteen forty-seven Texas City disaster. As Ms. Bowie stated, Commissioner stated, we had a very busy weekend with the duck derby, with the convention that we were welcoming and hosting and, and just, and, but in the midst of all of that, we were commemorating and celebrating the survivors who gathered together for their annual photo. I definitely want to thank Mr. Dennis Harrison Recreation and Tourism for facilitating that on Sixth Street at our showboat. It was just great to see and hear the stories of many of those survivors, my mother being one of them. I heard some stories for the first time, and I was like.
Tell me that.
You know, but it was great. I forty-five now was there to interview some of them. And, and those people are walking libraries, you know, to, to share the information that they've shared. Want to thank Chief Zach and the Fire Department for being there for the annual reading of those firefighters who sacrificed and perished in, in their rescue efforts. And it was just a very special, momentous day, as it always is each year. And did a great job, Derek, gathering some footage and putting that on for the people who couldn't necessarily be there. So we had some things that were posted and shared on our website so that the entire community could enjoy it. So again, thank you to everybody who participated in this weekend's events, whether it be duck derby or welcoming conventions from out of town or our annual commemorative memorial service for the nineteen forty-seven disaster. I made it a personal point of mine. Everybody knows that I work in one of the local industries. Yesterday, I mean, on April sixteenth, that was yesterday, I stopped at our shift meeting and educated them on the disaster. And we paused for a moment, and many of them who work out of town, who live out of town but work here, were unaware of it. And so they were very appreciative, because when you work in an industry based upon safety and operations, and that was very important for us. So again, the, the disaster happened, but that's not how the, the story ends. The story ended with the resilient efforts of our community coming together and rebuilding this city as we always have done after any local disaster. And so I'm very grateful to be a part of a city who always does that and serve on this commission with people who lead that effort. So I don't have anything else to say. I will go and ask a blanket request of the city staff. If any, anybody has any updates or reports, you can stand and give that at this time. Anybody on the, Ms. Kristen Edwards, EDC?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. On May eighth, Johnston LNG bunker four will host an open house in Texas City for the public to learn about a project to build the first small-scale liquefied natural gas facility on the US Gulf Coast to serve a growing clean energy marine fuels market. The proposed LNG bunker terminal will be built on one hundred forty acres of shore in the Texas City industrial complex. It would be optimally located to serve ships coming into Fort Houston, Fort Galveston, and Fort of Texas City. The meeting will be from four thirty to seven in the captain's room at the Nestler Center. And everyone here is welcome to attend to meet the individuals leading that project and just to see this amazing possibility for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, for that update.
Thank you, Kristen.
Four thirty to seven. Anyone else? Ms. Golden, engineering?
It's not an LNG plant, but the planning board approved a novel plan for Texas Roadhouse.
All right.
That's about as exciting.
They're planning to break ground this summer and be opening March.
All right. Thank you for that news.
Where would that be located?
So it is on the Gulf Relight Runway, near Buckeyes and the Cretin, right next to Cretin.
Thank you very much.
I just have two things.
Lager?
Hey, Justin Maka, this is Derek at the library. The first thing is this Saturday, two o'clock. A month ago, we said thank you to taking care of best shot at health conversations and U T and P group of students. There was a young Texas City high school student named Sean, who is interested in public health, who is a part of that organization. They've been prepping him to give his first presentation involving public, public health on food safety. This can end up Saturday at two o'clock at the library. If you have a chance to come by, they're gonna have food, and he's gonna be able to give his presentations, combine support from our local students interested in public health. And right after that, the Galveston County Health District is doing a focus group on mental health. And it's gonna be, they're trying to get anonymous, anonymous information just about the community's views on mental health here in Galveston County. So if you get a chance to participate in that, that would be wonderful as well. But I definitely want to encourage everyone to support the students who, many of you may have seen them and met them here. So excited about presenting to the community. And then our other group that we also thank on the same day, Toyota, Bay Area Council of Alcohol. They actually gave us a grant through their happiness grant for funds for sustainable library programming. That you'll hear us doing announcements throughout the year for what we are spending that money on. One of our first things we're doing, lots on adult board games. And we're creating, we now have an adult board game night that's starting the fourth Tuesday of every month at five thirty. So bring friends, bring family. Those adult board games, like you have the Cards Against Humanity, that's for adults, not for the family. And so, but then we have a whole bunch of other great games, classics, and some contemporary. Also with that, with money from them, we now have a movie license that we can now show movies at the library. And we're gonna be planning throughout the year some family movies, and adult movies, and teen movies, just to create a safe space and a welcoming community where we can relax, socialize, and, you know, increase the.
And Jessica was also at the home dedication yesterday, and I thought that was really neat. You gave the girls, she has two girls, and you gave them bags of books and also put some books on their bookshelf inside their house. I thought that was really neat.
Our friends at the library helped donate some, and we donated some of the books there. And we found out, we're like, oh, wait, you're one of our regular patrons. And that was great. And with the teenager, it was actually one of our former volunteers at.
Oh, great, great.
We were super excited to see them and see their participation.
Yeah, it was neat.
Awesome. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Mr. Ramari?
The city of Texas City has a local election. Early voting starts on Monday, April twenty-second. Voting locations can be found on the city website and on social media. We do have two designated places in Texas City, which are Carver Park and the Nestler Center. But we contract with the counties, so you can vote anywhere within Galveston County.
Thank you very much. The candlelight vigil.
Tim has more information about the candlelight vigil that will be taking place on Sunday.
Sunday, six o'clock.
Yes.
Six o'clock?
Nestler.
Nestler, all right. Anybody else in the city of Texas City?
Motion to adjourn. Was it introduced?
Meeting adjourned.
So second.
You're right, you're good.